Schmidt?
Here.
Schutti?
Aye.
Banky?
Aye.
Severt?
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
There.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I just want to make one quick comment. We're here today airing it live due to Governor Evers declaring a public health emergency due to COVID-19. And the city of Peshtigo has and will continue to be doing everything possible to ensure citizens and employees' safety. We have closed all city buildings and will do our part while this health emergency is in place. So I would appreciate everybody's patience. I want to thank our city staff. Tam Castle has been overwhelmed with absentee ballots. So I mean, our city staff is second to none, and I just appreciate everything that all our department heads and our city staff have been doing in this emergency. So thank you all, and just we appreciate your patience. Business and communication is presented by Mayor Melkey. Discuss and consider Resolution 2020-03, a resolution declaring an emergency pursuant to Section 14-1 of the Peshtigo Code of Ordinance, City of Peshtigo.
Can I call him for a second, please?
I'm entertaining a motion.
Alright, so move.
I'll second.
First by Banky, second by Parker. Any discussion?
Yeah, there was, there was an issue here. I'm trying to find it down.
Was number three changed to add with the approval of a simple majority?
No, because that's a moving court. Nope, we can't.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, I think is addressed in second page 2B, subject to ratification, alteration, or modification by the council as soon as we can meet. So I think that may cover any concern I might have.
Okay. Any other discussion?
There was one, there was one word in here that, that referred to the person in mayor as her, and I'm not seeing it, no.
Oh, it's, it's in number three where she deems necessary, but because this has a closing date of June.
Or if the emergency is lifted, whichever comes first.
Right.
I think that word should be changed to where the mayor.
He slash she.
He or he slash she, because we can't, we can't take for granted that it will be a she or a he. Am I correct?
That's true. If something happens to you, then it passes to me, and I'm not a she.
Sure. And I just want to clarify, one of their other concerns is, it was, we wanted to also instill that we had to have a simple majority of the council, but that would be illegal as that is a walking quorum. So we could not go that route as well. Any other discussion? Take the roll call, please.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Schutti?
Aye.
Banky?
Aye.
Severt?
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Committee reports, water and sewer met March 10th, 2020. We approved the minutes of the February 18th, 2020 meeting. Reviewed disbursements for water and sewer, approved a one-time sewer credit for Patricia Arshambolt at 530 East Park Drive. Received an update on the river crossing. Water utility and sewer utility wastewater treatment updates by Director Cowell. And I entertain a motion to discuss and consider Resolution 2002-04, a resolution acknowledging George Cowell, Director of Public Works, as authorized representative for the city of Peshtigo wastewater management system improvements and all related activities.
Correction, 2020-04.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I think it was probably right on the resolution.
It is.
It's right on the resolution.
Yeah, we'll change it for the next one as well.
It's 2020-04?
Yes.
I don't know, I missed it.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, a second?
So move.
Thank you for a second. Any discussion? Take the roll call, please.
Schutti?
Aye.
Banky?
Aye.
And Severt?
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
I'll entertain another motion to discuss slash consider Resolution 2020-05, a resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures for Clean Water Fund program wastewater collection system improvements.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Take the roll call, please.
Banky?
Aye.
Severt?
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Schutti?
Aye.
Fire, lighting, and building.
Fire, lighting, and building met March 13th. We approved the minutes of January 23rd meeting, January 23rd, 2020 meeting. At the time, we discussed and considered awarding the bid for a new fire engine. And for a motion, I would like to award that, that one chosen, which is?
Alderman Banky?
Yes.
We should probably call in Chief Garden?
Okay.
At this point?
Well, make the motion to award it, but I would get the first and second before we do any discussion.
Otherwise?
He had information to change.
I was gonna say before, otherwise we're gonna have to amend the motion, so I thought maybe we could get some information first regarding the performance bond.
Oh, you think you might need some amendment for it? Oh, okay.
Yes.
In that case, yes, we'll, we'll hear, hear further information first. Thank you for informing me of that.
Is it mine?
No.
No, he's, he locked the other. Doesn't say you must be getting some.
So some come to the door and they turn around and went back.
Whoa, brand new bottle of water. It's like old. I could've sold that charge. You want me to back yours?
Sure, if you need a table or something.
You could come up, come up and stand in front of me.
Okay.
No, you better stay about eight either way from him.
I'm trucking.
If you needed a table, you could push the table up and forward.
I can just put it right here.
Thank you for coming in, Chief Garden.
And what we had done at that meeting, previous meeting was okayed the bid to be sent to council for, for awarding. And at that time, it was with Custom Fab and Body. And the only question was, does the council want to spend the money on a performance bond for that truck or not? They could save $11,860 by not doing the performance bond. And the reason, I would say at this point, you wouldn't have to, because when we do this, there's only going to be two checks issued. One check will be when the chassis is delivered to Custom Fab. And at that time, the city of Peshtigo issues a check for that truck. It's licensed in the city of Peshtigo and insured by the city of Peshtigo. It is then goes to Custom Fab for, and if something would happen, we got a truck, okay? We've got a chassis. It goes to Custom Fab for all of the body work on there. And there's no check issued from the city until that truck is complete and accepted by the city. So.
Basically, that is, you know, very low cost compared to what we're talking about.
Oh, right, in totality, I, I get that. I, I do. But it's still $11,860 that wouldn't have to necessarily be spent. But again, that's a council decision. It's, it's not mine, and I'm not sure how, how our city attorney feels towards that. Because like I say, we're gonna have a truck chassis regardless, once we pay for it. And then the truck itself is not paid for until all the work is done on that truck and we say, yep, we accept it, and then the last check goes out.
As I was talking, talking with you, chassis, even if something happened with the next guy, we still own that chassis.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna have that chassis regardless, because it's gonna be licensed and insured by the city of Peshtigo upon them receiving payment for that chassis.
What do you think, think the timeframe is for all of it to be done?
About 300 days.
Oh.
It'd be about a hu, and in fact, I brought the, I got the rep here from Custom Fab here today, if you have any questions at him. But it's about 150 days to get the chassis. And then another approximately 150 days for them to do the bodywork on it and build it. That's kind of it, you know?
How about if I make the, I'll make the motion to award the bid to Custom Fab with the optional deduct of the performance bond of $11,860. Bringing in the total cost. What's the total cost?
$463,416.
Yes.
Did we want to clear that?
He's deducting it?
Deducting, yeah.
From his motion, yes.
So then there'd be, there would be a check for the chassis of $97,972 when that comes. And then the total final payment to Custom Fab at that point, if we do not do the, do not do the performance bond, is $365,335.
Okay, then the motion would read, make a motion to award the bid to Custom Fab Body LLC for the total cost of, the total that you just said, with the cost of the chassis to be paid at $97,972 to start the project, or to start to build.
That one is paid upon completion?
No, the 377 is.
The 970?
The 97 is once we get the.
Of the chassis.
Yeah.
When the chassis comes, that's when that, right.
I just want to make it clear, because I thought it sounded like he thought, was, I thought the motion was that it had to be paid upon ordering.
Oh. So he was confused on that. We don't have to pay that.
We don't have to pay anything until the chassis comes in.
Oh, okay.
And again, Gary's out here from Custom Fab. You can ask him directly if you choose, because he did bring a contract with the performance bond in and without the performance bond. And that, like I said, it's a, it's a, it's a decision from the council.
And I could just go with a straight motion with this total cost.
The total cost, yes. I mean, if you wanted to put in there then.
I mean, you could break the two apart, you know, that the performance bond is that on a total or is that on a?
The performance bond is on, on the total project.
So you don't know which, which one to take it off of, you know, so I, you know, I guess, doesn't matter. You know, I mean, because total cost comes to 475, 276, with a deduct of 1160. But then you got, you got 97, 972, and you got 377, 295, so how do you want to break them apart to, to put this 1180? I mean, you're.
Otherwise, maybe, you know, say that the project was the 475, and then that you decide not to do the performance bond, bringing the total cost down to this amount, and then you, as far as the payment on the chassis, that can be taken care of once it's here.
Right.
Yeah.
And there'd be, there'd be money in there for it, and then the final check would come at the end, let's see, in 300 days.
Alderman Schutti, you have had your hand up. Thank you. Go ahead.
Do you have an issue with not doing a performance bond at all?
No, given the explanation of chief, I mean, I think the risk to the city is very minimal, given the fact that we're not paid until we receive.
And again, I, Gary's right out here. If you'd like to talk to him directly.
I don't have an issue with it.
Would any of the Aldermen like to speak with the rep?
For me? I don't feel the need.
Well, see, I was, something to say, you know, about process, I, doesn't matter.
I mean, he's right here.
Well, he made the trip, recommend.
Gary, you want to come in?
Somebody will have to step up.
His name is Gary Bogenschutz from Custom Fab.
Okay, you'll have to step out for a minute.
Okay.
Thank you. Or I'll just stay here. Just, the thing, the thing is, if you're, if you're considering the performance bond and you're not giving any money to a manufacturer or a builder, that money really doesn't do anything. It doesn't hold any water, okay? So to make it simple, in this case, I think I know why the city does that, because as a, as a council, you don't know what proposal a manufacturer's gonna bring to you. Somebody may bring your proposal that does have money down and that the council may decide that. So it's actually a good practice that you're doing that. But in this case, you're gonna have no liability to take anything or anything like that, so it's, it's just money.
Until it's satisfactory to us.
The thing is, you might say, oh, it's just a protection. No, it's no protection, because you didn't, it, the bond is triggered, there's money down. So. So.
Okay.
I would make, I would just make, to make it simple, make a vote on what the amount is, and then put language in there that says, you, within 150 days, the 97,000 is due to, is due to the freightliner.
Is that what the contract states?
Yes. Chuck has the contract, yes. And.
Oh, then that, that would, that would help.
Whoever signs it today, I will still leave you a copy, but we will send you back a copy from the owner, a legal copy. But we will make sure that you have even the copy that Chuck is, would sign today, or whoever signs today, okay? That you have a, you know, and you can always toss it when you get the original one, okay?
Sure.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming to.
Can we just make a motion to accept the contract?
Yep.
Yes.
Contract for them all stated.
With the approval of the attorney?
Yep. I have no issue.
Thank you, we're first two as a second.
Sir?
Do we read back the motion, please?
Motion to accept the bid from Custom Fab and Body LLC for the fire engine. Is it contract in the custom?
First one to the contract.
LLC contract for the fire engine. For the $463,416, excluding the performance bond, with the approval of attorney's name.
Any other discussion? Take the roll call, please.
Severt?
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Schutti?
Aye.
Banky?
Aye.
And then we approve the new phone and internet offices that are on hold right now temporarily because of coronavirus pandemic, I believe, if I'm correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And that would be up.
Streets and drainage?
Oh, we're along, until it's done with? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we're working on a little bit of stuff. They canceled all of our upgrade stuff for the computers too right now. And they are looking at rescheduling and maybe trying to come in here, because since we are closed and we have such limited staff, that camera corner was, they said they would feel comfortable coming in. So they're trying to reschedule that, so at the same time, we'll try to get this scheduled in.
I'll say it possibly after elections are done with, when there's not so many people coming in and all, yeah. Okay.
Streets and drainage, Alderman Banky, you offered to read that one too as well?
Okay. Streets and drainage, they discussed, consider awarding a bid for a crack sealer.
Do we want to call George in?
Yes, George?
Well, sorry, you should go up there.
He's coming. He could, he could hear me.
Thanks, yeah.
Explain our crack sealer.
Sure, we had one bid for the crack sealer there that you have there. Primarily because it's territorial and purchased, there's vendors for different districts. So we did advertise it, and we did have one bid, and it's within the estimates we had originally prepared. With it, we're getting different adapters for the end of the sealer for different sized cracks and stuff. It will allow us to do our own crack scene, our existing crack sealer, we have not used at all. It's, safety features associated with it are not there, so. So if you look at our road system and the condition, we're having a, it's a challenge to keep up with the deteriorating conditions, and this will be just another tool that we can do. We'll be doing that with our own manpower. In, in the past, we've contracted out each year for crack sealing. So the amount that we're probably putting towards labor plus crack sealing can go just to material, which would be good, so. That's where we're at on that, I guess. It's a craft coat model. And it's oil jacketed, so it's not direct fire to the kettle.
What's the cost on it?
You should have it with your package.
$32,130.
Pardon?
$32,130?
No, it's 50 something, 50.
It's on 1158.
Oh, on the second page.
Yeah, you have some notes on there. I don't know which amount.
I, I don't see it in my paper, that's why.
It's the 51,158.28. And that, that's delivery two here. From Chandler, Arizona, so it's not like we're gonna go ahead.
The second page it was, there was two pages.
That was with delivery, George?
Well, let's see, I haven't looked. There's another page to this that might actually be in form. Do you have that, Tim?
No, it's over.
I'll grab it. It's got the actual page written.
You got some handwriting on the bottom.
Ah, this one?
Yep.
Okay. I see Sherwin Williams on there. They're gonna have to paint. This was a pretty, okay, 51,158.28. Yes, that meets all the specs specified?
Yes, it does. Uh, the actual, where they put it on the bid form. It reads 50,987.28. And then, I'm not sure if that includes the 1,600 delivery or not. I'm sorry. It's hard, but that is the number they had in the bid form, 50,987.28. 987.28.
Written on your second page.
On the bottom left, I believe.
50,000.
On the very left.
Oh, I see. 987.28, okay.
That is the number they put on the actual bid form.
Okay.
So with a potential of $1,600 more for delivery?
Yes.
Where does this come out? Chandler, Arizona?
Chandler, Arizona.
Do you know how much under budget, I mean, I know we had a, a thought in mind of how much it would cost. Do you know how much like under it came?
Quite a bit, actually, I think. I don't remember the exact dollar amount. I thought we had a, I thought to read this around, was it 60?
I thought it was 75.
76, around 75,000, I think it was.
I thought it was 60, but.
Yeah, it's, it's more than that. I didn't, I haven't looked at it.
So you're, you're looking at, at with, that'd be 50,987.28, then you have to add 1,600 for delivery.
Possible.
I'll have to clarify that, but yes.
Okay. Are you, what, are you?
Make a bid on the purchase and then on the delivery.
If you add 1,600 onto that, would be, he's got 16, well, depending what the price is, I guess. If it's 51,158, if you add 1,600 to the other number, that's higher yet.
Oh.
Ricky, you can put that in the motion?
Is this up for motion, or was this just to discuss?
Slash consider.
Okay.
Yeah, 52.
We could make it with the option, with the potential option of $1,600 for delivery on.
Yeah.
Providing it.
Okay. Make a motion for the.
What's the name of the company?
Crack Co.
Yeah, Sherwin Industries.
Sherwin. Sherwin.
Sherwin Industries, Inc. Bid for $50,987.28 with option for a delivery of $1,600.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Take the roll call, please.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Schutti?
Aye.
Banky?
Aye.
Severt?
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's it for you, George. Oh, we got Chipper.
Metal stain.
Right, metal stain right here.
While we're looking for Mike, is an authorization for him to advertise for bids for that?
Yeah, make a motion for, for Director Cowell to advertise for Chipper.
Set here.
Any discussion? Take the roll call, please.
Schutti?
Aye.
Banky?
Aye.
Severt?
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. No, I was just gonna say the next two items, I accidentally doubled up on their personnel.
Those should be on personnel.
Yes, yes.
So I will cross those two off on mine.
All right, thank you, Alderman Banky. Parks and Recreation? George?
Were one of those items to advertise for seasonal employment?
Yes, it's down under personnel.
Yeah, I accidentally put it in two spots, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, don't worry, we have it covered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask Sean to come in? Well, actually, Public Works is first. Oh, I'm sorry, Parks is.
No, we got Parks and Rec, now we have Personnel, he'd be coming back in.
I jumped ahead to Personnel. I should have flipped off them like that, with Sean and George and Sean again.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, we're on the Parks and Rec, and we need to discuss and consider awarding a bid for lawn mowers. You want to give us an update?
Sure, so I had um, a total of five companies bid. There were three of them that did not meet our bid requirements. So, and one of them would be the lowest bidder, but they didn't meet our bid requirements. So it really came down to Jace Sales and Service and Cosi's Polaris. With, so part of our bids were that one was a sixty-one inch deck mid-mount with a vacuum system. And then the other one was a seventy-two inch mid-mount, above room zero turn, with an option of having a vacuum system. So Jace Sales and Auto came in at thirty-one thousand eight hundred and eight dollars without the seventy-two inch having a vac system. With the vac system, uh, the option, it was thirty-two thousand four hundred, looks like, I'm sorry. It would be thirty-three thousand two hundred and forty. Cosi's Polaris, their bid came in with both lawnmowers meeting our specs with power vac systems at thirty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ten cents. So I recommended to the council that, sorry, correction, I recommended to my committee that uh, we go with the Cosi's Polaris for the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ten cents.
For two mowers with floors?
Two mowers with a vac system, yes.
Did we decide to go with the vac from the larger mower?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. I make motion to accept the bid from Cosi's Polaris for thirty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ten cents for the two mowers.
Second.
Any other discussion? Take the roll call, please.
Banky?
Aye.
Seaver?
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Schutti?
Aye.
And then we're on to discuss and consider selling the two Parks lawn mowers?
So I do already have authorization, authorization to sell the, the vac. Equipment that we have, the one vacuum street sweeper kind of looking thing.
The one that never worked?
Well, there's, yeah.
The monstrosity, the monstrosity.
So I already have authorization, authorization to sell that one. I'm looking to, once we pick up our new lawnmowers, to sell the two that we will not be currently using, but the new lawnmowers aren't replaced.
I think we made a minimum bid for the other piece of equipment?
We did, and I, I really have no idea in their current state what they're worth.
Okay.
There's just not enough information out there to really kind of research to see what they would be worth. So, I mean, we'd be kind of guessing, but the minimum bid would be, I don't know.
Yeah. What was that site called?
Wisconsin Surplus.
And it's advertised, is that currently, right?
Uh, nothing that we own currently is, is advertised.
No.
The stuff that we did have advertised, it's uh.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Parks Director to sell the lawnmowers on Wisconsin Surplus after we receive our new lawnmowers and start at a minimum bid to be agreed upon between Parks Director and, should we do the city mechanic, would that be appropriate?
We had one set.
Sorry.
We didn't have one set at committee?
Can I get a second?
Second.
We did for the, I need a second.
I second.
There's nothing.
For the sweeper, we did, but not for the two lawnmowers, because at that time we, bids hadn't even got out when we had that.
Okay.
At the time that we did the authorization for the sweeper.
You could, you could probably talk with, you know, Cosi or one of the other
I thought our city mechanic.
Predators in the area, and see what they're, or they would think it's worth.
Yeah, the city mechanic might know.
He might know, yeah.
And I'm sure if he didn't, he would talk to him.
I think he would be a good person to start with.
Yeah.
Would you like me to go to, once I've called?
I, in the motion, it says Director Northrup and the city mechanic.
Yeah, and then you can set a price.
Any other discussion?
I'm clear with that.
Take the roll call, please.
Seaver?
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Schutti?
Aye.
Banky?
Aye.
Personnel?
Thank you. Do we need George?
Thank you.
Do we need George, please?
Okay. We should just cut them and skip on to the third one, and then when I.
Yeah, you don't have to come back, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Personnel met earlier this morning, and from that meeting, I would like to make a motion to recommend to council to approve hiring the Public Works Department candidates as chosen in closed session with alternates selected. That would be pending a background check, drug and alcohol test, physical, and background with the D M P.
Well, second.
Any discussion? Take the roll call, please.
Luke?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Schutti?
Aye.
Banky?
Aye.
Seaver?
Aye.
And then also. Pardon?
Was that candidates plural?
Yes.
Candidates, with an S.
Thank you.
It was, candidates with an S. Okay, and then, we also considered advertising for seasonal, summer, and/or part-time D P W employees. So George has the authorization to.
Advertise.
To advertise.
Potentially, we, potentially we have the one, one summer position, so we'd like to advertise for that. Depending on what all happens in the near future, but that's what we'd like to do. Last time we advertised the part-time, we did pay applications, we went to an employment agency, which worked quite well, we had a really good employee. So, we'd like to advertise those again, though, so.
Alderman, Seaver, was that in form of a motion?
It was.
Yeah, so I guess.
Do we need a second? Thank you.
Thank you, no.
Any other discussion?
How, how many? What do I got?
We have one, one.
Kind of.
You know, a summer employment position in one part-time.
It's just advertised at this point.
It's just advertised at this point, yeah.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Schutti?
Aye.
Banky?
Aye.
Seaver?
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
And also in form of a motion, I'd like to recommend to council to approve hiring candidates for the Parks and Recreation Department seasonal and summer labor positions as chosen in closed session. And Sean.
Okay, that's okay.
It may change up a little bit due to the virus, but Sean, Sean has an other control on how he's gonna handle it and who's gonna do what, so. We put our trust in Sean, and it's our motion.
Any other discussion?
And how many, how many people we have?
He has several, he must have it probably five.
Sean?
He brought it in by you, as your personnel meeting.
I think that might.
I don't know if it changed.
Hi, Ken.
How many, how many individuals do we have?
So, for our part-time position, we have four. For our summer workers, we have two. For field prep, we have two adults and two students. So there's one adult and one student that are for sure, the other one would be alternates. And then the weed harvester, we have one, and camp host would be the same as was last year, two, or one, because Kim is white.
No, two adult.
Two adults.
Two adult mowers. There are two adult, those are, they're kind of between the ball field, is that, are they work with ball field too, or what?
As far as the part-time, or?
They're full-time.
Uh, yeah, so they'll be kind of going back and forth.
Okay.
Yeah, can I go over that one more time, we have four students.
So we have, for the part-time positions, or part-time, full-time seasonal, would be a total of four. So two of them are students, but they're, they're graduating in May, so they will be not considered students. And for summer workers, I have two students. I do have one student for field prep and one adult. I do have a standby for another adult and another student in case one of them decides not to take the position. And then one for the weed harvester, and then one for camp host. Now I do have alternates because of the COVID nineteen that I can pull from if for any reason, any of the candidates don't feel comfortable working under the current situation.
We have the lawn mower, we have the adult lawn mower, and then do we have a lead adult, like we usually?
Yeah, so I have the working supervisor, which has been called in the past, working with another adult. So there'll be two for the parks, and I have not necessarily a supervisor, but a lead lawnmower. And he would have, he or she would have the person underneath them, so it would be two lawnmowers. Lawnmower pairs.
Any other discussion? Take the roll call, please.
Schutti?
Aye.
Banky?
Aye.
Seaver?
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Finance and claims?
We discussed consider transferring eight thousand dollars from account ten dash fifty-seven fifty-four dash oh eight oh Park Improvements Holiday Decorations to account ten fifty-five twenty-four dash oh two four four camp, or Badger Campgrounds Building Grounds Improvement for ten dash five nine nine zero zero nine two zero Capital Improvement Fund for construction of sewer hookups to five sites at the Badger Campground.
Second? No, no. I before, because she just was reading it, she said they discussed consider, so before we make the motion, we have to decide which one we're giving it, which one we're taking from. And so I don't know if you want Sean in again, but he's looking, he needs the eight thousand dollars to do this project. And he was originally looking to take it from the campground, or from the holiday decorate. But I know we were trying to build that up for the holiday decorations. So if you would like him to take it from that, otherwise I suggested taking the money from the Capital Improvement Fund, which is, I think it's around four, excuse me, around four hundred and thirty thousand right now. It's over four hundred thousand, but, so I guess if they want, discussion first to see which account you want it to take from.
I believe it should come.
Alderman's union?
Yeah, did he have an estimate of how much it's gonna cost New York?
Eight thousand?
I just waved them, but the eight thousand, does that cover everything?
Okay, I see where you're going with that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Does the eight thousand cover everything, like you're not gonna have to ask for any more money?
So, the, the second part of that, there's no eight thousand dollars would not cover everything. Through the sale of the two thousand eleven Crown Victoria, we got forty-six hundred dollars for that. And I was gonna kind of split that up, so sixteen hundred would go towards the, the new vehicle that Parks and Rec got from the police department to do, you have repairs, getting tires and stuff like that. The three thousand dollars would be a part of the eight thousand, and that's kind of where we're getting the eleven.
So it's actually eleven thousand.
Eleven. So eight thousand would just.
In addition to.
Well, yeah, so the eight thousand, wherever you decided it would come from, whether it be from the account here or the capital outlay. And then on top of that, another three thousand from the sale of the Crown Victoria to go toward that, which is the second, which is the second point here.
We do Parks Improvement, how much was in there?
Uh, currently, well, that's what we were kind of discussing here, it's forty-five hundred.
I think it was the four thousand, yeah.
Pardon me? Parks Improvement, I believe right currently now is forty-five hundred.
But we've got all spring and summer and fall.
We can talk that in the category.
Right, we would want to deplete that.
There's other projects that I would like to kind of allocate that to, so that's why I wanted to.
Could we not take it from Capital Improvement Fund, seems how it's taking us a long time to build up our holiday fund?
That's where I was recommending.
Okay.
Just a thought, so I'd make a motion to transfer the eight thousand dollars from ten five seven five four dash oh eight one zero to Capital Improvement Fund. Ten dash five nine nine zero.
Oh, the top is it.
Top. Okay.
I thought it's ruined. You don't want to have.
So we're gonna take out from the.
Capital Improvement, what's that on your?
Holiday decorate.
We're leaving it in the holiday, we're leaving it in the holiday.
We're leaving it in the holiday.
Right, we're taking that off, I mean, I'm crossing that off.
You're gonna take it from ten dash fifty-nine ninety dash zero nine two zero.
Oh, that's what I was making?
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That is a motion. Second, anybody?
I'll second, yeah.
Any other discussion? Take the roll call, please.
Banky?
Aye.
Seaver?
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Schutti?
Aye.
Which brings us to the Crown Victoria for three thousand dollars to transfer to the campground for the sewer hookups. So what did we put it in? We're gonna put it in ten dash five five two four dash zero two four four Badger Campgrounds Building Grounds Improvement.
Two four four, yes.
That would be for the construction of the sewer hookups to five camp sites at Badger Campground. And the other sixteen hundred from the sale of the Crown Vic is going to go to Parks and Rec Vehicle Maintenance, which is ten dash five five two zero zero two four one. Good job, Sean.
You're saying that in form of a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Second by Alderman's group. Any other discussion?
Good job, Sean, selling that Crown Vic.
Take the roll call, please.
Seaver?
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Schutti?
Aye.
Banky?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. License and place?
I have no orders.
Such other matters as authorized by law?
I just want to say something, I just want to like thank the mayor and family and all the employees for putting this all together to keep us safe. And under ten and six feet away, and I think it means a lot to make this safe for us to meet, and we are thankful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just also want the public to know that what you saw today are committee meetings, and there usually would be a lot more discussion. So, we usually meet prior to coming to the council, but because of the COVID nineteen, we don't have that availability. So we put it on the special council meeting to be a lot done, so, to keep the city moving forward during this emergency. Anybody else?
I just wanted to, the next meeting, our next meeting would normally be the seventh, which is election day. So it would actually been Wednesday, the eighth, since we have special today, we have discussed postponing that. Since we do have reorganization, and I was thinking it was the fourteenth revision, but it's two weeks after the election, so our reorganization meeting. Since we do have reorganization, and I was thinking it was the fourteenth revision, but it's two weeks after the election, so our reorganization meeting is going to be held April twenty-first, so that would be our next council meeting. Yeah, we're not gonna be there between, just no, because that's next one.
No, no, next one, you'll probably have to meet in this kind of format to get out of your first magic.
Yeah, we'll see when.
The twenty-first, yes.
I will be unavailable.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming today.
And I'd like to thank your cameraman, too.
Yes.
Thank you for setting us all up. I agree, I, I think the public that is watching, and people that watched today, will appreciate it, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So yeah.
Luke?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Schutti?
Aye.
Banky?
Aye.
Seaver?
Aye.